So it's called to order with all members present. Brother Ali will be doing the invocation. If you could do that for us, yes. The invocation. So come on up and we will be led in the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Balboa. Either, you guys could choose, or together.
In the name of God, the beneficent, the most merciful, all praises be to God, the beneficent, the most merciful, master of the day of judgment. You alone do we worship, you alone do we seek for help, guide us on the right path, the path of those upon whom you have given your favors to, and not the path of upon whom your wrath has been brought down, nor those who go astray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Can I sit back? Your right hand will be crossed. That is the legion, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, and ever to be just as one.
All right, thank you all for being here. Thank you, Brother Ali, from the Islamic Center. Appreciate that. And Commissioner Balboa, thank you, ma'am. All right, we have a presentation on the agenda today. Is Senator Bradford here? Is he in the back? All right, the grand entrance, let's give it up for the Senator Bradford. And I would just like to let everybody know, I mean, I don't know if them, this means a lot to us, is that you give us regular reports. I don't know where our other representatives are, man, you're the only one, so.
I am responsible for that.
I give credit where credit is due, so thank you so much for being here today.
I appreciate that recognition, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank the council for allowing me to do what I've done for the last eight years since being in the legislature and come before this body and the community and just let you know what our legislative year was comprised of and some of the things that we were able to achieve both collectively as a state and individually as a member. For those who are unaware, our legislative year runs from January to September. We ended this year on September 13th. After that deadline, the governor has another 30 days to sign all outstanding measures that were on his desk, so I usually don't start these till after that signing period, so we're at that, that concluded on October 13th at midnight. Just a quick overview for this year, we passed major housing legislation, an issue that's great concern throughout the state of California. We dealt with rent control, rent gouging, where we've heard going on throughout the state of California. We've also put in measures to assist those who are in Section 8 to streamline that process. Many times you have landlords who choose not to rent to those individuals, not because they are poles of Section 8 or the individuals who have Section 8, but because of the process sometimes could be so cumbersome and takes months at a time to get a unit inspected and it leaves that unit unavailable for rent, so a lot of landlords say, let's avoid taking those vouchers. So we've helped with that. We've also, Governor passed accessory dwelling units. It allows folks, or many times what's referred to as granny flats, you can now build a accessory dwelling unit on your home, only if you have an existing garage. You cannot build a new structure, but if you have an existing garage, and what we found out throughout the state of California, the majority of folks who have garages don't park cars there, they have junk there. So they found out that that's a great source of housing for those who need housing and it's a great source of income for those individuals, once again, who do not park cars there. One of the issues of great concern here in California is wildfires. And as we've seen the fires over the last couple of weeks, one of the things we did was overhaul the way the state and electric utility companies pay the cost of wildfires. Many times those costs are passed on to the ratepayers, even though you weren't in the impacted area. We've addressed that to make sure that the burden is more on the utility if they have been found responsible for starting that fire. And some of the, so we've worked out ways to kind of like limit the liability to the ratepayers and create more defensible spaces and to help limit damages through wildfire. This year, we invested more in our public education every, any time in the history of state of California. From our K through 12, we provided 50 million for mental health. Many times we realized there's not nurses or counselors on our schools, so we've provided 50 million in that area. We've also placed a $15 billion bond on the ballot next year to help build new laboratories, classrooms, and libraries throughout the state of California. And again, we've made the biggest investment in higher education, our UC and CSU, in any time in the history of California. Other issues of great concern are clean drinking water, even though the city of Hawthorne hasn't been impacted just a little east of here, in my, also in my district, Sativa. Water agency was taken over last year by the county of Los Angeles because they had contaminated water. We have found contaminated water throughout the state of California, so we're making sure that no resident, regardless of where you live, have to deal with unsafe, unclean drinking water. And I'll just really quick get to some of the measures. I was just giving you overview of some of the things that we did as a state, and I'll get to the measures. I introduced 20 bills this year. Of those 20, 14 made it to the governor's desk. Of those 14, 11 got his signature. A bill of great concern that you probably heard all over the media was SB 206, the Fair Pay to Play Initiative. And people say, well, why is that important for college athletes? Because we found out over the last 50, 60 years, the NC2A has been exploiting these athletes. The NC2A is a billion dollar industry comprised of millionaires and billionaires, and we don't fault folks for being millionaires and billionaires, but at the same time, colleges and universities are making millions of dollars. The NC2A made 1.2 billion dollars last year, and athletes are the only scholarship students who do not control their name, likeness, and image. If you're a scholarship student and say you have a scholarship for music and you develop a song, you can monetize that. If you're a computer science major and you develop an app, you can monetize that. But if you're a swimmer and you want to teach swimming lessons, you cannot do that. If you're a football player and you want to teach, have a football camp, you cannot do that. And we've said it was long past time, so this simply allows those athletes in the state of California to monetize their name, likeness, and image, control it like any of you and any of us here controls our name, likeness, and image. We saw a favorable sign two weeks ago, the NC2A opposed this bill all the way along. Two weeks ago, they voted unanimously to endorse the Fair Pay to Play Act that we introduced here in the state of California. Our challenge now is to make sure that they live up to the intentions of California. We've also hit 13 other states who've stated they will introduce similar legislation next year, so we see the tide, as we often say, so goes California, so goes the nation. SB 155 just clarifies existing requirements to help the state achieve our renewable energy goals, which is vitally important to all of us here in the state of California. SB 206 again, which I just stated was the Fair Pay to Play Act. SB 255 adapts existing energy supplier diversity initiatives to suit the developing technology now in our utility industry. Forty years ago, when we created supplier diversity for, in the utility industry, we didn't have the cable industry, we didn't have renewable energy, we didn't have all the technologies that exist today. We say now, those industries too need to contract with women-owned, minority-owned, disabled, veteran-owned businesses. So it just helps spur small business growth in the state of California. SB 269, I don't know if anyone knows, someone who has been wrongfully convicted and then later exonerated and been proven innocent. There are hundreds, if not thousands, of individuals in the state of California and across this nation who are wrongly convicted and are later exonerated. Here in California, if you were proven to be wrongfully convicted and then exonerated from that crime, you only had two years to seek compensation. We've changed that now to allow an individual up to 10 years to seek compensation for every day that they were falsely incarcerated, and it comes to the tune of $140 a day. And for those who have done time and you've been innocent and your biggest challenge once you get back in society is how do you acclimate yourself back in society? And those two years go by so fast, and we saw a whole lot of people who just didn't meet that window, so now you have 10 years to get your fair compensation. SB 322 allows nurses and hospital personnel to freely talk to the Department of Public Health during an inspection. Prior to that, you could not do that. If you saw a violation in a hospital, you could not just freely walk up and expose that violation. That only makes, being able to do this now makes the hospital safer, that clinic safer, as well as the work environment for not only patients, but employees as well. SB 455 creates California Financial Empowerment Fund. We've all heard about the payday lenders, check cashing, you know, the three triple-digit interest rates that they were paying, and all, and on and on. And there are some bad actors there. I'm not here to demonize the industry because it does serve a role. There's plenty of unbanked Californians, there's 3 million unbanked Californians, and sometimes this is the only product available. But for those bad actors who are being fined, the state of California was collecting millions of dollars every year and doing absolutely nothing with it. Now they have to loan those, that money back out to nonprofits that provide financial literacy and provide microloans to small businesses and individuals who need it. So we're recirculating those dollars and making sure they reach the communities where they truly are needed the most. SB 519, it was the State Water Resources Board, it just allows the water replenishment district to access funds directly to do a lot of cleanup, as we stated earlier. We have the replenishment district here, and so it allows them to just access funds directly to make some of those cleanups. SB 3, I mean, 534, Rent States, the Insurance Supplier Diversity Task Force, again, similar to what I was talking about in the utility space, we're now encouraging those businesses that do $100 million with the state of California to contract and procure what women own, minority own, and disabled veteran businesses here in California, again, to help spur small business here in the state of California. And there's plenty of small businesses here in Hawthorne who could qualify and take advantage of that opportunity. SB 595, as you all know, in 2016, we passed Proposition 64 that made cannabis legal in the state of California. My biggest concern is that we want to make it work here in the state of California. SB 595 provides fee waivers and deferrals for those individuals who are looking to open businesses and go in that area, regardless of where the city is on that issue, it is an industry that's here, and we want to make sure that it operates above board, operates legally, so we want to provide as much access as possible for those individuals who want to operate businesses legally in that space, because if we don't assist them, what's going to happen? You're going to have the underground economy, and we're going to have the illegal market. Whether you like it or not, it's going to exist, so we want to assist those businesses in entry into the space. And a lot of times, when you think about this cannabis industry, you only think about selling or growing, but it's 17 different licenses you can have. And what I'm trying to let folks know that, the biggest one that we're lacking in the business space is testing laboratories. Everything has to be tested before it hits the street, from seed to sale, and we're trying to encourage folks to open up testing laboratories, so you'll make sure that the product, whether it's for medicinal use or adult use, recreation use, is safe. And we've heard all the horror stories of the last couple of months about vaping and things of that nature. You want to make sure what that product that you're getting is safe, so testing laboratories, commercial kitchens for the medicinal products as well as the adult use products, there's opportunities there, there's delivery, there's packaging, there's advertising, so we just want to make sure that those individuals who want to do it legally and above the law have as much assistance as possible. And the last measure is SB 676, which lowers the cost of associated with electric vehicles. We know we're encouraging folks to drive electric cars. We want to make sure that our grid is available and up to par to integrate all those new charging stations, so this bill just makes sure that as we install charging stations, we have adequate supply to provide that need and that, again, they're charging at a time of day where the rate is the lowest, where we can take advantage of that as well. And just in closing, just to share also, I secured $30 million again in the cannabis space, because again, we want to make sure that this works. I secured 7.5 million for Charles Drew University, that's just east of here, that produces more minority doctors and nurses than any medical school in this country. That money will be used for outreach and recruitment to make sure that people throughout the 35th Senate District have an opportunity to apply, go to medical school, go to nursing school there. And finally, $5 million for community-based organizations to help improve innovative and transformative rehabilitation programs for folks who have done time and allow them to get certificates in mental health education and be public health providers. So overall, as you can see, it's been a pretty productive year, and by all standards, not only for the state of California, but for myself, so just wanted to bring you that update, and if there's any questions, I'd be more happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
No problem.
Thank you.
That's easy. Oh, and before I leave, on Tuesday, November 26, if you have families, individuals who need turkeys, we're doing our annual turkey giveaway, and as I often say, it's for the needy, not the greedy. So we want to make sure that you truly need a turkey, and we're doing it this year, since I have a big district, I have seven individual cities. This year, we're moving it to the Watts Labor Community Action Center at 109th and Central Avenue. Last year, we headed it to City of Gardena, Raleigh Park, the year before was at El Camino, so we try to move it throughout the district, so it'd be at WL.
Let us know when you want to have it here.
We'll probably do it next year. We just try to move it around throughout the district, so.
Yeah, before you go, I do have a question regarding rent control. They just passed the law, which is basically 5%, you can increase it 5% and then what the?
Yeah, but another 3% cap that can't exceed 8% on an annual basis.
Okay, what about the county? Does this affect what the county's doing, or does it affect what other cities are doing?
It's statewide. It's statewide, it's going to have an overlay with the entire state as it relates to rental property, and then it resets at the first of the year.
So if the county has a 3%, like they did up until, I think that's what it is, now this is superseded by the state law?
Well, they can go up to that 5%, they don't have to achieve that 5%, but they now can go up to that 5%.
With the county?
Yeah, if they have a lower rate, they can still honor that lower rate through the county, but if they choose to raise it up to 5%, they can't.
Okay, let me, the county has a cap of 3%, says you cannot raise rents more than 3% and the state says 5%, does the state supersede the county rent control ordinance, or you still have to abide by the county even, you know, is the law?
I think that's why we're going to do a reset at the first of the year. I think right now that does supersede, but then it's a reset at the first of the year, so those are some of the things that we're trying to work out on the measure, because as we all know, it's no perfect bill, so you know, it's a lot of unintended consequences, and it was a lot of debate here on this issue, so yeah.
Okay, we know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor Protem Valentine has a presentation on tonight's agenda. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to present a couple of economic reports. The first is going to be from the League of California Cities. The annual League Conference of the League of California Cities was held October 16th through 18th with representatives from nearly 2,000 cities. Here are some of the highlights based on what I believe would be of interest to Hawthorne. At this conference, each professional department met to discuss policy issues related to their field, and such departments were mayors and council members, city managers, fire chiefs, fiscal officers, personnel and employee relations, and public works. Now, each one of those were comprised of cities from, that represented, people represented their cities in each of those departments. LA Councilman Joe Buscagno, a member of the LA City Council, announced that he will become president of the National League of Cities. The National League of Cities is the umbrella of all the state leagues. Mr. Buscagno pledged to be the voice of California in Washington, stating that his priorities will be innovation, strengthening the local and federal partnership, and addressing the homelessness crisis. He also indicated that for California, the good news is that the port in Southern, the LA port, has reduced diesel particulate matter by 85%. However, he stated that California continues to face the challenges of bringing in more businesses, resolving the conflicting goals of housing and how to finance it, and homelessness. He indicated surprisingly to all of us that nearly a quarter of the nation's homelessness population is in California. If you think of that, that is humongous, that is huge. The state expects a moderate growth in revenue. Last year, the state had a $21 billion surplus, that was a windfall from revenues that were higher than expected and expenditures that were less. The estimate for the current year is 4.4 billion as a surplus. The Newsom administration is keeping the fiscally prudent path of Governor Brown. The recent state fiscal health index signals that tensions may grow between the administration's priorities, efforts to solve large statewide issues such as housing, homelessness, and public education, and revenues available to make a difference, even with rainy, state rainy day budget revenues. There is no expectation of a recession, but if there were a downturn in the economy, it would be felt first by the state, more, first by the state, then the cities, because the state depends more on personal income taxes, and if those go down, the state will feel it first. The cities depend on property taxes, so they would not be hit as early if there were a downturn, but that's really not expected. AB 147 implemented the US Supreme Court Wayfair decision, which will result in the collection of more than $400 million in state and local taxes and use taxes from revenue sales, from internet sales. On October 1st, the marketplace facilitator requirements were set to go live. The marketplace facilitator, for example, Amazon, has to collect the sales tax for any retailer using their platform that has collected more than $500,000 in sales. The league has created a valuable tool for cities, and it asks what questions should we be asking as cities to determine our financial health? The league's tool is called the California Municipal Financial Health Diagnostic, and is a 14-point diagnostic tool which recommends policies at all these levels. And so I have forwarded the information to our city manager and to our finance director so that they can look at the tool that the league has created and see what can be taken out of that that will be of value to us. The league touted many positives it has helped cities accomplish this past session. It secured major funding in the budget for affordable housing, addressing homelessness and local planning. It protected SB 1 transportation funds for local streets and roads. It stalled aggressive mandatory housing density bills for a year. Many other bills of concern were amended or sidelined, however, as we know, some did get through, such as SB 330, which we have discussed before. It addressed rural clean water issues through a 10-year state funding plan in lieu of a new water tax. It avoided liability for cities associated with the attempted repeal of inverse condemnation for utility-caused wildfires. Right now, the utilities are still liable for damages caused from a wildfire started by its power lines under inverse condemnation. There was an attempted repeal of that, but it failed. And the League of California, the California Cities is patting itself on the back and saying it helped cities push that back. A compromise was reached on the law enforcement use of deadly force by passing SB 230, which didn't change the standard for use of force, which everyone was afraid of, that would change the standard. However, it did create a reporting requirement, which is rather significant, and I invite our law enforcement officials to really study SB 230 to see what they are going to be required to do. Okay, thank you, that's my report from the League of California Cities. So now I want to talk about the, so now I want to talk about the the economic forecast, which I attended. So on October 19th, 2019, I attended the South Bay Economic Forecast at Cal State Dominguez Hills. There were several panels, I'm only going to talk about two of them, because I think only two of them were significant for us. There was an economist panel headed by Dr. William Yu from UCLA, Dr. Jennifer Broadman, and Dr. Fenwin Prager from California State Dominguez Hills. So here are some of the points that they made related to housing. The rent spike is over, so the rapid rise in housing prices is going, is over. They see moderation in prices from now on, very small increases in sales, and a leveling in prices. Rental prices are going up in certain cities. Rent control has limited the incentive of owners to fix up their properties. For owners, the percent of money that goes into the homes has gone down, but for renters, the percent has gone up. This is something we all know from past conversations, in Southern California, there is a net outmigration of middle-class residents. Only Riverside and San Bernardino counties have a net in migration. There is no expectation of a recession, so I'm hearing it again from other economists. The Fed is going to lower interest rates again, this should pump up the economy. The yield curve is a predictor of recessions, and there was some concern because the yield curve appeared to be in an inverted, in an inverted state indicating that there might be a recession, but this time will probably be different. The economists say the key is consumer confidence, which is still strong. The housing market is helping the economy this time, unlike 2008. There is some uncertainty, because until there is a trade agreement with China, there will continue to be some uncertainty. However, the Chinese economy is in trouble, China has $3 trillion US dollars. One of the strengths of Southern California is that we are not dependent on the Chinese because we have investment from several other countries. There was a panel on the, called the Future is Here Technology Panel, which I think is of real concern to us, and I'm going to speak a little bit about that. Van Espabody of Starburst Aerospace Accelerator and Monica Jan from Virgin Orbit spoke about the value and success of aerospace in Southern California. We learned that aerospace, which captures everything that has to do with mobility in space, has embraced the venture capital spirit. Investments in aerospace continue to climb. There is a shift from investment in media to aerospace. Aerospace companies are significantly increasing their startup venturing activities. Starburst Accelerator is in eight countries, they're an LA-based company, but they're in eight countries. They offer mentoring and access to all the major aerospace stakeholders to any startup aerospace company, and they also offer direct financial support and other venture capital Virgin Galactic was discussed by Monica Jan. Virgin Galactic was the first space company to be on the New York Stock Exchange. They're based in Long Beach, and they talked about new investment being flooding into the satellite world. They have been testing more affordable satellites, and they use state-of-the-art rocket technology. They indicated that small satellites are becoming popular, and this is this paradigm shift in space technology. So interestingly enough, because we all, years ago, thought aerospace was dead in Southern California. Aerospace is now the hottest thing in Southern California. There is more activity to build entrepreneurs than ever before. There were many 2018 aerospace startup successes. There are three hotspots in the South Bay. If you can guess which they are, El Segundo, Torrance, and Hawthorne, by the increase in numbers of jobs. So there is a higher concentration of manufacturing jobs in El Segundo and Hawthorne, where several world pioneer aerospace and defense companies are located. And you'll see on the chart, what I, the picture which I have there, and I'm quoting there, there are companies such as Raytheon, Northrop Grumman, Boeing, SpaceX, and so on. With the rise of SpaceX, which is now worth $30 billion, Hawthorne has seen remarkable job growth in recent years, higher than the South Bay and the whole of Los Angeles County. Along with El Segundo, Torrance, and Inglewood, Hawthorne is also seen as an active place for startup companies and venture capital funding. So we are on our way, and this, I think this is wonderful. So we are on our way, and I think this is wonderful news for our city, and the entire South Bay recognizes that Hawthorne is definitely a player in the South Bay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Thank you for representing us on those boards and bringing that information to us. Much appreciated. Let's see. All right. So is everybody okay if we bring up item number 14, which is dealing with the fireworks? There's a specific discussion time for that, so we will be able to offer the community the opportunity to comment on that, so. All right, so, item number 14, Mr. City Clerk, can you please read that, please?
Sure. Now is the time and place for a public hearing to amend Hawthorne Municipal Code, reducing the number of certified applicants applying for a city fireworks permit from eight to six. City Clerk's Department Declaration Publication filed, no written communications were received.
All right, folks, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go through here and see if there's any cards have that topic, so I could bring you up. Phantom Fireworks is, are you a representative of the fireworks company? You are a representative of the company? All right, so let's have some resident, any residents want to speak on this? Then I'll put you in the middle. Go ahead, sir, Mr. Morsy.
Hi, I'm Roger Morsy. I'm the commander of the Veterans of Foreign Wars here in Hawthorne. My question on this is, we're reducing the number of applicants from eight to six, which may be a good idea. My question is, how is this going to affect those organizations in the city that are grandfathered in outside the lotto for those spots?
So, just for clarification, a super quick clarification, this is to get the public's opinion as to what direction you guys would like us to do, keep it at eight or six? Possibly after the, we'll answer that question during, you know, after all the people come up and speak, okay?
I do have a question. Why are we going from eight to six? What's motivating this?
So all that will be discussed during the discussion on the item.
Okay.
Okay?
I thought that's what we were doing now.
No, no, we can't have a back-and-forth because it's just a one-way, you know, comment section.
It was just a question, that's all.
No, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Let's hold that question so we can answer it. Anybody else wishing to speak? Morse? I can't read the writing. It's handwriting.
Wait, wait, she's first. She's on your list.
It doesn't matter.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, I'm just a little confused about, oh, I'm sorry. I'm a little confused, after he got up, to find out if you're accepting us to talk about it right now or talk later.
Well, okay.
Make our comments.
We have a back...
Did not get one. There wasn't one out there.
There's, you can maybe try to get one from somebody real quick and come back up. I'll give you the opportunity to come back up if you get to see what the discussion is on that, so you can read what it says, and I think we'll have...
I'd like to speak now.
But, ma'am, you can speak now if you have any comments right now. So we need to make sure that everybody understands for, just for future reference, that each resolution, each item on the agenda also has supporting documentation that's outside. And if you're watching online, and if you have access to the computer, you can open up any single resolution or ordinance or public hearing and get information on that. So, ma'am, I'll let you come up after anybody else comes up. Who else would like to speak on the item? So I'll bring you back up, okay, ma'am? Ms. Orton, come on up. Let's just do this.
Okay, I have a really bad cough.
Go ahead, ma'am.
This is just...
Yes, no problem.
Excuse me. Well, addressing the Honorable Mayor and the esteemed council members, my name is Linda Florrie. I have been involved with our Little League Boys and Girls in this community for 50-some years. And we entered the fireworks stand program back in 1991, which is like 28 years ago. There's always been eight slots of freely given, all those eights were picked out of a hat every year, and then down the road, they decided to exempt three positions, and that was fine. That's no problem. I really don't want to see the eight opportunities go away. Right now, the issue with, I think the fireworks issue, is the rental cost. For many years, the costs ranged from $1,500 to $2,500 that you would pay to the company, and they would do what they needed to do, and you would make a deal. And that was a reasonable cost, but now it's gone out of sight and advanced from $7,000 up to $10,000 to $15,000. And that's what people do not know. When you get hit with a rent like that for what we are doing, it is insane. And I just have to say, it's just totally insane, the cost. After you get through, going through everything you do for that entire week, and it's a tough week, the groups have a really tough time meeting their expenses after the whole thing is over. So the amount of fireworks stands has never been an issue, I don't think, with any one of us, and even when the three were chosen without having to go into the lottery was fine. To our surrounding cities that I've come across and talked with, they do not have a lottery at this time. They haven't had it for years. And all you do, and that would be Inglewood and Lawndale, you go to the city, you apply for it, and you've got it. And then you deal with the company as to where you're going to be. So that's never been a problem for them. Our Little League and softball groups have been in the city, as I said again, for 50 years. And it's a tough road now, which I know in a lot of organizations are, when you have kids to work with and the parents to work with, and what they can afford to get their kids into at the cost of things. There are some years better than others, I think, for all of us, and it sort of revolves around the day the Fourth of July falls. It falls on a Friday or a Saturday, maybe even on a Sunday. It's a big deal because people come out and they buy more stuff during those particular days. So earlier in the week, and then leading up to when the Fourth does come, things can be stretched or strained. Does that mean I have to quit?
Yeah, you can just finish up your comments, ma'am.
But anyway, I really would like the council to give good consideration to what they're doing about limiting it to six, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and neighbors. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak on this tonight, and I'm very happy to hear some of the statistics that were just quoted. So from what I just heard a moment ago, the eight booths have to make $120,000 in sales before they even make one penny of profit. $15,000 in fees times eight booth, $120,000. Here's my concern. We heard during the previous council meeting that these groups were not making enough profit or were not making any profit, and in some cases were losing money because of the fees that they had to pay these agencies. As the wife of a combat-disabled Vietnam veteran with severe post-traumatic stress disorder, as a resident of Hawthorne who has post-traumatic stress disorder myself, I can tell you that for those of us who have to deal with that particular issue, it isn't a question of the flash and the bang. For some of the PTSD people that have fireworks as a major trigger, and that's number one for any of them, for any of us with PTSD, it's not only the flash and the bang, it's the concussion, it's the smell. So regardless of whether it's something that you hold in your hand that just does little sparkles, it is emitting the same smells of the cordite that triggers the problems with people who are triggered by the smell of the explosives that they used in combat. It's an important issue. And so there is no secret that I have been opposed to fireworks sales in the city for a very, very long time. I know what our police department goes through every year in trying to police it. I know that we have the problem every single year with, well, do we call it in or not? Because it might be legal and it might be illegal, and if they can't distinguish which is which when they make a call, the people are out there lighting out the big bombs and the things that are definitely not legal undercover of people not knowing whether they should call it in or whether they don't. So what I'm saying basically is, first of all, I want the people to be aware of what the consequences are, not only to people with PTSD, but many people are also talking about problems with their children, they're talking about animals that run away the days before the Fourth of July happens, and once all the bombs start going off in all of the different neighborhoods and the animals run away, the shelters are overfilled. And so the poor animals who have the misfortune of ending up in a county or city shelter in the week or so before Fourth of July are euthanized in order to make room for the poor animals that break out of their yards and break out of their homes and run away and cannot be found by their owners for a few days after the bombs all go off. There is more consequences to this than just, you know, there are other ways to celebrate our nation's birthday. Let's put up flags, let's put up, let's sell hats and shirts and clothes and twirly gizmos, things that don't terrify our residents. And I would also say, if you insist on going ahead and having fireworks in this city, limit it to the very smallest number that you can, so at least the legacy organizations have a chance to make a couple of bucks rather than terrifying everybody and losing money on it in any case. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Let me speak now. Let me, it's public hearing. They speak now or they will not speak later?
Yeah, exactly. You're gonna speak now or not? Phantom Fireworks Representative, are you here? You need to speak now, sir. I can't wait till everybody else is, you need to start speaking too.
Mr. Mayor, Council.
Yes.
My name is Maury Diem. I represent Phantom Fireworks. We're the second fireworks company in Southern California, there's only two of us. It makes no sense to me to cut down the amount of permits because you're already one of the lowest cities in the entire area with the fewest amount of permits. Lawndale next door has about 33,000 people, and I believe they have nine to 10 fireworks stands. There's 87,000 people in Hawthorne, and now you want to cut it down to six. It's going to obviously limit the amount of groups that can raise their money for their particular cause, for their nonprofit cause, and, you know, it's just, it makes no sense. So from my standpoint, I can't wait to hear the reason that this is being brought up, and hopefully that we can put some common sense into this measure, either leave it at eight and not make it any less. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to speak? No? Okay, I declare oral communication closed. Anybody else? All right. Go ahead. Yes. One more time. Yeah, go ahead. Just for the fireworks. No? Okay. All right. Anybody else wishing to speak? If not, you want to, no, you had that single time. Okay, ma'am? All right. Oral communications is close-ordered. All right. Discussion. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. This actually, you know, after I have a conversation with our attorney, Russell, the reason that he's here today for the public hearing is because, you know, we've been having eight fireworks stands for many, many years. Nobody's trying to eliminate fireworks in the city of Hawthorne, okay? Let me take that out of the equation. We're not going to vote to say no more fireworks in Hawthorne. We'll continue to have fireworks standing in Hawthorne. The question has been, and the lady from the Little League put it very clear, is the cost of the rent for the location? Location and location have become like a prime time. Let me answer Mr. Morse's question. It will not affect the VFW or the Post or the Wounded Warrior. You guys will continue to have your three stands, and you'll continue to have priority to select the location. The reason we were talking about was those five other organizations that have to be on that lottery pool. For these past at least 10 years, the nonprofits have not been making the money they used to in the past. And one of the reasons was is the, that rent that the fireworks companies trying to charge 50% on the nonprofit. Okay? Because some of the locations, for example, Hawthorne and 118, they said they negotiate $22,000 for that seven days location. Then they're trying to charge the nonprofit $11,000. If you go down to the other, $8,000 location, they charge you $4,000. $6,000, you have to pay $3,000. And we are not selling fireworks like we used to, because remember, once upon a time, the people would come and buy fireworks, and they would blow them up and then come back and buy more. But we limit only discharge fireworks on the Fourth of July from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., right? But in the past, people would buy seven days, they would come and buy, blew them up, and come back and buy more. They're not doing that anymore. And the other reason they're not doing is because now they want stuff that's going up to the air. They have all those illegal fireworks coming from Arizona, New Mexico, Tijuana, across the border, Vegas. They buying those stuff now. Even now, they have orders they can buy online and bring them to our cities. And that's where they're going, those big booms, and because we see that on the Fourth of July, it's like a war zone, it's like Iraq, Afghanistan in the middle of a war. The reason that about those five to three, it was to make sure maybe the nonprofit would make a little bit more money if there would only be three plus three. Three nonprofit and the three that his grandfather in, the VFW Post or the veterans organizations. So if those three would be able to compete among themselves, and that will be open, the location location is prime time. The location now is a prime real estate, because whatever you are, if you're on Major Boulevard or Mission to Session, you may be able to make a little bit of money. So then, my question, and it's gonna be for TNT and Phantom, I would not mind to keep those eight fireworks stands, but you have to compromise with the nonprofit, not to charge those tremendous rent like the Little League said. I would tell you that you should at least put a cap. We should just pay you $1,000 for the location and period. Or you negotiate no rent with the nonprofit. Then we'll keep the eight stands. But we, I tell you, all of us been doing this fireworks, like she said, for many, many years, and we have seen the profit dwelling, and you keep charging us for delivery, location, the flyers, the bags, for everything. And we, the nonprofit, not making money. And we slave for ourselves for seven days, seven nights almost, to deliver you the fireworks profit. And if we, the nonprofit, we might just come up with 20%, not even 30% profit. So that is the key. That's the question. It's not to eliminate fireworks in the city of Hawthorne because that was voted by the voters. And that is where I want this public hearing today, for people to come and express their opinion and tell us what direction we should do. But like I said, my thing is, I'm not trying to eliminate the fireworks. If we could compromise with TNT and Phantom, we'll keep the eight stands. But if the people do not agree with us, we'll leave it the way it is, because it's not affecting my pocketbook. It's not affecting, you know, because the money that we make is to give to the people of Hawthorne, the needy families, or even to buy a turkey for Thanksgiving, or to buy a school surprise, or even to paint the classrooms. So then in September, the kids can have a fresh room, clean. That's the most important thing we do with the fireworks money. It's not for the salaries, it's not for our pleasure, it's to help the poor people in the city of Hawthorne, the children, the families. So I asked TNT... So I asked TNT and Phantom, consider to put a cap on that rent for the location because that is the problem. Thank you.
All right. So I guess now it's my turn. You, you wanna go? Go ahead. Absolutely, go ahead, yeah.
I, I see a couple of the TNT people and Maury, uh, you know, I, um, feel a little awkward here because I have to vote and I'm also one of the, uh, and I'm, well, not vote, but make a decision, you know, I have to make a decision. Is there any room for entertaining what Alex is talking about? Putting a cap on things, making, allowing?
Do we do discussion?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna, public hearing's reopened.
Make it real quick.
But if I give her, if I give him an opportunity, I'm gonna get it, let anybody else in the audience just comment.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not gonna just go one.
Is there an appetite for you guys to do something better so the nonprofits can make a little bit more money?
Come, come to the podium, Mr. Maury, please.
I would say that if I owned the property, I would not charge any rent at all, but I don't own that property. And those properties are owned by individual landlords and companies and they put a price on it and it's up to us to negotiate the best price. When you have a competitive business like this is, you do your best to control those expenses. But the, the price that you said for what, uh, one twentieth and?
One, uh, Hawthorne Boulevard and 118.
Okay, that was where you were, right?
No, I hadn't been there for quite a while because you wanted to charge me ten thousand dollars and I said, only if I sell sixty thousand dollar fireworks.
I think that we offered you the site at the Marshalls and the Walmart Market and that was eleven thousand dollars and you would've had to pay fifty percent of that. Okay? So, uh, in other words, I don't, you know, I don't know what you want us to do. We either, uh, put in information that the landlords cannot charge anything for these properties, which I don't know that you have the authority to do that. I'm sure that when Starbucks comes into town, landlords start thinking, oh my goodness, here's a chance to make some more money. Why is this business any different than any other? You mentioned the expenses, we have expenses also. We give you the opportunity to open up a business for seven days, you have to pay your share of the expenses. For us, just to give you everything for free, we might as well not sell fireworks at all. It doesn't make sense. We don't do this, uh, you know, for fun, we do it to make a profit.
Maury, we, we get that.
Yeah.
You gotta hear what the people are saying, you know, they want to shut down the fireworks, they wanna do this, they wanna do that.
I understand, Mike. Well, that's, you know, that's, uh...
You know, I'm just, uh...
That's a story we hear from a lot of communities.
Yeah.
Basically, and you know as well as everybody in this room that the major problem are illegal fireworks, not the, not the safe and sane fireworks.
No doubt.
So if we could get past that and not blame Phantom Fireworks or TNT Fireworks for all of the ills that come with the fireworks sales.
Listen, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with what I, you know...
Right.
But there's a lot of people that are not as comfortable as I've had the, the opportunity.
I, I understand.
And those are the ones that are bringing this up.
Can somebody come up with suggestion on how to tame the landlords and keep them from charging ten, fifteen or eighteen thousand dollars for a piece of property that we're only gonna use for four or five days or seven days?
Understand that, but you gotta throw a bone to the people that are doing the work day in and day out. There's a lot of work that goes involved in those seven days, you know?
That's right. And, you know, as a fireworks individual, we have seven days in the year to make enough money to last us for the whole year. So it's not like we have the opportunity come July fifth to make up for any sales or to pay our expenses. So we have to clear money so that we can survive for the entire year. Now, you know, other states are different where you have thirty days to sell or they sell year round, but in the state of California, it's a seven day process and it's just safe and sane fireworks. So not only are we competing with the illegal fireworks, which is very hard on TNT and myself, but now we're competing with the groups that just don't want to pay any expenses. And that's fine, but again, uh, you know, what's the solution to that?
Uh, Mr. Maury, but hold on one second. Because you know, in the past, Phantom used to be much more willing to negotiate. For these past couple of years, you got another salesperson that is above you that come and change things around.
Mm-hmm.
So it was not us, it was not the nonprofit, and you know the truth.
Okay, Alex.
Because you know how, we have done excellent business for many, many years.
Yes.
And, and you know is because your leadership changed and, and she came with the big horns and trying to change things around. And that is what the problem have risen, is not just because of the nonprofits, but it's because the, the fact that you guys no longer negotiating in good faith.
Well, let, let me just say this and I, and I don't want to, uh, with all due respect, okay? We present a contract, we present property, we negotiate, we sign a contract, we make a deal. After the fact, if one of the parties isn't satisfied with the deal, they want to change the deal and then they want to change the contract. Now, you know, I don't own Phantom Fireworks, I have people that I have to report to. And these people say, that's the deal, we made the deal, these are the costs, these are the expenses, this is what the group has agreed to pay, and I don't have the authority anymore just to give away the store. And if you can't understand that, I don't know how, how better to explain it. So, you know, if you agree to something, I think you should stick with your agreement, live up to your, uh, part of the bargain and move on to the following year. But...
That's, that's what we have done. That's what we have done. But like I said, is the fact that the, the company now, in the past, you guys used to negotiate a better rate for the lease. And then suddenly those leases have become astronomically, you know, unfair.
Well, again, it depends on the...
But thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
I, I appreciate your having me, thank you so much.
All right, folks. All right, um, thank you Councilmember Montero for addressing this issue and as you all know through my discussions in previous years, I've always kind of had issues with the whole fireworks stance, period, with regards to the groups not making enough money and it just kind of being more like, you know how like you have the kids selling those chocolates and it seems to only benefit the companies, but a lot of, all of the groups out their benefit in some positive way. They know what they're getting themselves into. So I like to equate this situation as an employer, a small business employer that has eight employees. And he has three of his employees with the best offices, the best pay, and it's just like that. I mean, excuse me, veteran organizations, et cetera. But then you have all the other five employees there, you know what? You guys have the back offices over near the warehouse where it's all noisy and I know it's uncomfortable doing your work, but you know, you just figure it out and you guys do your work over there. And sorry, we can't pay you, whatever you, you know, you guys make whatever you make. That's what it seems like right here. And the thing is, it's like, well, since I can't pay you guys, I'm gonna put you out of a job and you're, what was it? Two of you guys, two of you employees over here on the backside, we need to just let you go. Why? Because you know what? We just don't have any more money to, to pay you. Or, or we just want these other people to get more money. These remaining six groups, employees to make more money. So is it fair that we let these two people go because of that situation? No, it's not. I don't think, they need a job to feed their families. The nonprofits, all eight of them needs to be able to have the opportunity to raise money for their organizations. And this is what they do and this is how they do it. You know, they know what they get into, they know the challenges. So how, why, sure, it's harder, but now you want to eliminate the total opportunity for two nonprofit organizations? I just don't think that logically makes sense and, uh, it's not very charitable if you, if you ask me. Now, if the veteran organizations are willing to just maybe put the location in the lottery for the sake of helping all the rest of the nonprofits or make it totally random, let's see. If you ask them, are you willing to do that? They're probably gonna say no because they have access to the best positions, locations around town. If we want to truly make it equitable here and get them, give an opportunity for everybody to make a fair, like as much, you know, balance it out and give everybody an opportunity to possibly get it, let's, let's do it that way. But the three organizations are not, not gonna want to do that. So it seems like this, bringing it down from eight to six, would just simply just harm a couple of the nonprofits that are out there. I did hear like opposing views today. Obviously, the, you know, there's two groups that have interest, personal interest in their groups, you know, flourishing and being able to make any profit for their nonprofits. But it just seems contradictory. We want to help people, but we want to also take away the opportunity for two groups. But I, I do understand that...
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me help you. So basically, uh, let's just table, let's just table this. So, uh, Russell, what's your advice? So I just tabled and, because like I said, I wanted to hear from the public.
I have.
Okay, so, so that's what I, so, so this debate is not going anywhere, so I would like to table this.
No, sure, we will, but, um, at the same time, at the same time, I do agree, um, my question ends up being eventually, is the rent just passed along from the property owners directly to the people on the field? Or does it go through the companies and then they determine how much they're gonna charge?
They negotiate, they negotiate, they negotiate the rent with the, with the property owner, not us.
Then there, the problem might exist.
Okay, so that's, that's the way, like I said. So, uh, the only thing that like Mr. Maury said... One thing that Mr. Maury said is that if there is a way, that maybe we can help them negotiate better, better contract, but I don't know, we, we do, we do not have that authority. But we can always try to reach out to those owners, maybe send them a letter, say, you know, this company, or let, to give them a reason not to charge too much money. So that could be a way maybe to help them up, negotiate better price.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, I, I just wanted to weigh in here, um, listening to this. And, and I, I would like to get maybe a legal confidential on this so that we can clarify it. But this seems to me like a private contractual matter, which the city council is not really involved in trying to police. It sounds like a private contractual matter between the fireworks companies and the nonprofits. And I, I, I'm not trying to take any one side, but it, the fireworks company, uh, the representative from the fireworks company said that the nonprofits know what they're getting into when they enter into the contract. And, um, the fact that they don't make any money on the back end of it is not something that to me, the city council can get involved in trying to solve. So in, in spite of the fact that we may have a, a feeling that we want our nonprofits to do well, and, and I certainly do want them to do well, I can't see, it, you know, from, from my standpoint, I can't see reducing the number of fireworks stands from eight to six so that the, so that the ones that are left will make a larger profit. I don't think that that's our job as a city council. That's how I would, that's, that's how I see it now. But I would like for our city attorney to take a look at this and see what our position should be in this.
Yeah, well, I, um, I think though, I'm, I represent a group of veterans and, and I think that, uh, obviously they're my children, I like my children more than other people's children, you know, the, I, I believe that, that veterans are special. And so, but that's just me.
They are special.
That's just me, you know?
They are special.
So, but what, what, um, what happens is the, it's kind of like a take it or leave it with only a few minutes to make a decision. Um, that whenever, I think that if, if, you know, if they start negotiation earlier, you might have a better chance of cutting a better deal with the fireworks companies than to show up here the day of, you got a lottery and then you gotta make a decision right then and there. And, um, maybe they might want to, uh, have a little bit more time to think about that. You know, we don't have to, uh, you know, our organization and VFW, you know, I, I think everybody should have a little bit more time to think about, uh, the deal. Because that's what they're talking about, it's a deal, we're gonna make a deal, you're gonna get this, you're, we're gonna get that. We're gonna make a deal with them, I like it, I don't like it, I'm gonna walk, you know? And if you have a little bit more time to make that decision, it might make things better. Than to show up, have a lottery, go out in the lobby, pick a, pick a location, look at some numbers that sometimes don't reflect, uh, reality and you have to make a decision based on that. So I think maybe that process might be able to, um, to, you know, have a little bit more time. I, I don't know, I, I think that that would be something that we could do. And you're right, we can't tell them what to charge, we could just say yes or no. And that's, that's the only thing we can do. I don't like it, forget it, you know? But, um, but I, I think the process needs a little work. And it needs to give people a little bit more time to say, are you crazy? You think I'm gonna pay this for that? You know? As opposed to, you know, take, take it or leave it. You know? So that would be my suggestion.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the next up item, but I guess we both, all, everybody up here agrees that there's, we would like to see our nonprofits flourish when it comes to this. And we know that there's been existing issues and challenges. So I guess we can all agree on that.
I have a motion to table.
Do we need to vote on the table?
Yeah.
Okay, let's, uh, let's vote on, the motion is to table.
I would second that, I would second the table.
So a yes means we put it on the back burner.
The Rotary Flex Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Thank you, guys. All right, so where are we at? Ordinance number, item number sixteen? Does that sound right? Yeah. Item sixteen.
Perfect.
You haven't done, you haven't done oral communications.
You even have to go back to the beginning.
See, I knew there was gonna be a problem.
So go back to number, item number seven.
Actually, number five. So, Mr. Clerk, can you read the guidelines for oral communications for the regular meeting, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report and/or recommendation.
Anybody wishing to speak?
Marlon Savilu.
Marlon Savilu, okay. Pat Donaldson.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, Mayor Potem. I'd like to announce that on November twenty-sixth, we'll be having our Thanksgiving turkey food giveaway. Three hundred turkeys and three hundred bags of groceries at the Hawthorne Auto Square at one PM, November twenty-sixth. That's two days before Thanksgiving. And then on December twentieth, at the Memorial Center, we'll be having our, also giving out five hundred turkeys, five hundred bags of groceries and hopefully thousands of toys. So I just want to make sure that everyone remembers those dates. November twenty-sixth at the Hawthorne Auto Square and December twentieth at Memorial Center, same time, one PM. Thank you.
I don't care. Patrice Springer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and, and City Council. I've worn many hats and I'm, I'm, I'm back in Hawthorne again. I was with Rotary for many years and I worked for Sentinela School District. And I just want to tell you, I was away from Hawthorne for a while and I really want to give everyone kudos for the city. I mean, I came down Hawthorne Boulevard and I'm like, gosh, there's a Target. And we pulled it to the parking lot, oh, there's a hotel. Um, you know, this is like the new and improved Hawthorne for me and it haven't, I haven't been away that long, so I'm really impressed with what has happened with Hawthorne and how Hawthorne is growing and I'm just really proud to be a part of Hawthorne again. And I just wanted to introduce myself with a new hat. And, uh, I just wanted to introduce myself with a new hat. Um, I will be, um, representing elder abuse advocacy in the South Bay. And, um, I think I was Googling elder abuse. And most of the information that I found out about elder abuse, um, was put out by attorneys. So it's all about people suing people for elder abuse. And I think that there's a lot of advocacy that needs to be done as far as what is elder abuse? Elder abuse is physical, it's emotional, it's sexual, it's neglect, it's abandonment, it's confinement, it's passive neglect, it's willful deprivation, it's financial exploitation. One in ten, um, of Americans over sixty are victims of elder abuse. Five million elders are abused in the, in this country every year. It's estimated that one in fourteen cases of abuse are reported. That's one in fourteen people of five billion people are being reported. It's men and women that are doing the abuse. Um, sixty percent of abuse are family members, family members or spouses. There are warning signs of abuse that we need to recognize. Two-thirds of perpetrators, um, are adult children or spouses. There's warning signs. Um, elders who, who have been abused have a three hundred percent chance of death. The fraud cost to elder Americans is from two point nine billion dollars to thirty-six billion dollars. And those are just a few of statistics that I wanna bring out. And there's through, um, you know, workshops, through things that, and I'm hoping that the city will support, uh, offering, um, advocacy for elder abuse in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. They need, the question needs to be real brief.
Ms. Springer, thank you for bringing that, uh, very valuable information to us. I invite you to get in touch with the senior commission. We have a, this is another new thing in Hawthorne since you were here. We have a senior citizens commission, and there are some of the members here from that commission. I invite you to speak with them and get in touch with them to coordinate your efforts.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ali.
Good evening again. My name is Mr. Ali from the Islamic Center Hawthorne, community outreach person. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the city council members for, uh, your support over the years for the Islamic Center Hawthorne, um, the police department and Chamber of Commerce. We appreciate, uh, the effort and time you spent in reaching out to us and, um, back and forth relationship. Uh, just wanna say on behalf of them, uh, we appreciate everything that you've done and support. I'm here today to invite you to our open mosque day for the community, everybody watching online on TV. Um, this November twenty-fourth, Sunday at three P M. And I'd like to personally give our invitations to the city council as usual. And, um, looking forward to seeing everybody there. We have dinner, um, and open house as, as well as we're trying to be a good neighbor and invite everybody to, uh, participate in this day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Professor Peter Yu. Professor Peter Yu, you need to come up. Now's your turn.
My name is, uh, Professor Yu. Uh, I'm speaking for affordable housing. Specifically, I'd like to work for the important group of people, that's city employee. I'd like to see the city employee are well situated, uh, very close to work. And their burden is maybe half. Uh, if this group of people live well, the city, the whole city will have a future. And the whole city will live well also, eventually. I was here for, uh, three months ago. I presented my idea to, uh, the council already. I have a simple proposal to acquire the land behind, behind the city hall. If we, if we have this project done, everybody can walk to the office and walk back to office. And the burden to the housing is, to everybody is like a half. Three months has been gone and I have not heard anything. Well, I can only, only think maybe my idea not good enough. But I didn't give up. In the meantime, I was, uh, uh, keep thinking. I was very lucky. I, I was, uh, tuning around. I found a piece of property belonged to the school district. School district is a part of Hawthorne, of course. They are now, it's vacant. They only park a few cars. If this, if the city decided to house employee, these spots would be very good because it's not that far. If you have a charter bus, ten minutes ride, that's all. And, uh, everything is in walking distance. You walk to school and you walk to shop. Uh, so I spent my time, I made another plan. I already submit my plan to each one of you. Uh, in the, in number of, I submitted this evening. I hope the council will spend, each one of you spend a few minutes to read it over. See if it's any value to you. I am making myself available if you have questions. If you want to know more, I'd be glad to explain. But don't, just don't, uh, don't let it go because I think this is important. Housing is a problem in the city. It's everywhere. But we must stop, start or someplace to solve the problem. I think this is a good starting point at the city of Hawthorne for the city employee.
Thank you so much, sir, for your suggest-
Solve this problem, we can solve a much bigger problem.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Fernando Celadon. You look very familiar.
High school, class ninety-one.
How, how far back? I haven't seen you since high school, man. Nineteen eighty-nine, dude.
It's been a while.
How's it going?
Uh, good, good.
It was class ninety-one. It was class ninety-one.
Yeah, when I was over there. God, Jesus Christ.
Thank you for, uh, thank you for hearing me out, mayor and, uh, city council. I'm here to present a, an idea. Basically, it's, uh, something that I've been hashing out for the past two years. It's something that my colleagues and I are now working on for the past six months. But it's basically building a platform for Latin American and African startups in the Silicon Beach ecosystem. Currently, there isn't one in the Southern California area. Um, if we look just at the Latin American market, certain places like, uh, Honduras, Guatemala, El Salvador, uh, places like Gu- uh, Ghana, places like, uh, Egypt, do not have access to capital, do not have access to the technologies that we have here in Silicon Beach and Silicon Valley. They just don't have access to the startup funds. They don't have, uh, access to the startup expertise that we have. And so with my partners and I, and they are, um, my partners are the, um, International Business Accelerator, which is located in Westchester, California. We are proposing to have a physical space, which would be an accelerator for startup businesses to come to Los Angeles from abroad, um, on a couple of months or a month and a half basis to accelerate their businesses, applying the A, B, C, Ds and E's, which is augmented reality, um, blockchain, cloud computing, three D printing, and international import-export expertise to their products, um, as benefit to the actual community. We actually would also like to, um, serve as a conduit for startups in, in the actual communities. The mom and pop shops that can actually go global. Instead of keeping their businesses local, they could go global by exposing themselves, by exporting and things of the like. Um, goodness, what else? Uh, yeah, so we are proposing this. We, we would like to have a landing spot such as Hawthorne, where we, we believe that we would bring tremendous value. We understand that Hawthorne has SpaceX. Actually, one of my key, uh, locations for a, uh, the startup would be in the Hawthorne area because of SpaceX and because of all the innovations in, um, in sustainable, uh, energy. And SpaceX is on the edge of that. And so I'd like to speak with any of you and I'd like to speak to your commissioners. I know that you have folks over in the building and, uh, planning commission. Because one of the unique differences between ourselves and all the other co-work spaces and, uh, accelerators is that we would provide a co-inhabit space, kinda like what they have in, uh, Venice and, uh, Hollywood, which is, uh, I think it's called Podshare. And it's a place where you would actually live and work out of. It's where a hostel meets a business environment for the nomadic, uh, entrepreneur or, um, executive or whatnot.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you group have the fund to do this project?
Well, we would need to have a space to promote the funds. Currently, we're already gonna be doing a pitch demo remotely from Egypt for hopefully December or January. We're gonna be doing it into the Silicon Beach area. We're look, looking at a couple of spaces where we're actually gonna be pitching at. We already have the locations over in, um, the different countries. So we, we're already partnered up with incubators in El Salvador, Ghana, Egypt, um, Guatemala, and Nicaragua.
What is-
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, real brief.
How much space are you looking for? Good evening.
We're looking for anything between four thousand, seven thousand square feet because of the accommodating the co-inhabit space.
So is this an incubator?
It would be an accelerator because they're coming out of incubators in their home countries. They would keep be coming to us to accelerate. So we're looking at businesses that already have forty, twenty thousand to forty thousand dollars in traction. So basically, they already have a, a, a model to, 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 to build upon. And hopefully, they're taking their, their businesses from the local level to the regional level to the global.
And what stage is your business in at this point?
Um, the international business, uh, business accelerator is already established. They've been going for about four, I believe, four or five years now. And myself, my, my angle on the, uh, project is about three, three years in the making. I'm a school teacher. I have no business here, but I've been educating myself on, on the, uh, industry and I've been in the, um, event space for all my career. I've, since high school, I've been putting on events. And so, uh, that's how I come to it.
Would it be possible if you could just, do you have a presentation you could give?
A pitch deck?
Well, uh, through the planning commission.
Yeah.
Maybe they could put you on their agenda and then we could, uh, we have access to, as a presentation to them. And you can have all the time in the world to speak to them. And then they'll give us what their, uh, feedback was. And then we'll, we could move based on their suggestion.
Okay, sounds good.
Does that sound good to everybody up here?
Let's do it.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Good seeing you too. Thank you, everyone.
Absolutely. All right, so is that it? Anybody else? Okay, oral communication is close ordered. Right, I need you to line up on time. Oral communications is reopened.
I thought you were just calling courts. Okay. Good evening, city council members, city of Hawthorne. This is a season of giving. Departments heads, I'm Lethal Williams, a proud parent here in this wonderful city of good neighbors. Uh, it's always good to see Mr. Bradford's face come around and, and know that he's up in Sacramento moving things forward and giving us a opportunity to keep things moving forward here in our wonderful city of Hawthorne. And, uh, to speak on this L.A. exit, it has been truly, truly turmoil at our, uh, city airport here. And I've been there two times since October thirty-first, and it is, is a headache. I wish they would just exit that program right now, go back to the bargaining table and rethink things because it, you try to make things work and they steady implementing, opening up lanes, opening up lanes. But however, let's just keep, they hope, opening up lanes, exit the program and go back to the drawing board. And, um, to keep things moving forward, uh, our city needs a local transit. We have one in Lenox, we have one in Little Landale, Inglewood. It has been mentioned before and I wanted to bring it up again, speaking to some concerned citizens that have to walk their bag from Crenshaw to Prairie to Hawthorne Boulevard, even past the four oh five freeway. There is just not, uh, local transit. There is something had been mentioned, a dollar ride that's in Gardena and you dial, dial the ride and it comes to you. The city of Hawthorne needs, uh, uh, local transit. Please have that in mind. And, uh, a lot of homeless issues, a lot of homeless issues. Have City of Hawthorne put in motion to make our city a rent-controlled city? It is very, very important. What, what, what are we waiting on? What, what, what is the, what is the issue? Or has it just, you know, been in the back of the minds and don't wanna move it forward? Why we, why we are not a city of rent control? It's very important. It's very important. And, um, thank you. Keep up the good work, everyone. Keep up the good work. It is a season of giving. Let's give, let's give. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
To the mayor, we are a city of rent control.
Okay. Next, please. Actually, it's good. I mean, it's not that we don't do anything. The state did it for us. So you could, go ahead.
Good evening, uh, mayor and, and the council. My name is Carol Mastin and I am standing here before you first as a, uh, citizen of Hawthorne. Just have a one little concern. I know I came a few minutes late, but how come there's never no extra agendas out there? They always run out. I don't know if we have a shortage or what, but could we have a few more agendas? Um, that's the Hawthorne.
Our city clerk will, uh, look to see how he can, uh, help out with that.
I always have to borrow someone, somebody's to look at. Okay. And then, um, as the senior service, senior citizen commissioner, I just wanted to, um, to share with you all that, um, the senior citizen commissioners of Hawthorne would be having a holiday sock drive on December the fourth. And the Hawthorne, and the, the home that we have adopted is the, that we are, want to give out socks this, this, uh, season too, is the Hawthorne convalescent on one hundred and sixteenth and Gravilla. So we're asking if you, uh, in your kindness, if you will please donate socks. We have a box at the Hawthorne Memorial Center, at the senior citizen center, also at the, um, uh, at the, at the main office. So if you, um, don't mind, we're asking you all to donate socks for seniors. We have eighty-eight seniors, uh, in this residence. And, um, uh, the project the, the, the commissioners took on is to donate socks, uh, to the, uh, to the seniors of this, um, of the Hawthorne convalescent home. And we plan to do that on December the fourth. So we need you to get your socks in right away. Uh, just donate to the, we have a box set up and we'd appreciate any of your donations. And happy holidays to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person, please.
Thank you. Um, I would like to tag on what Lethal Williams just said. Uh, you are absolutely correct. The state law is changing on January first, but I've become aware of some situations in the past couple of weeks in the gap because of unintended consequences. What is happening a lot right now is that landlords who have tenants who are long-term tenants or who are in rent-controlled apartments, pardon me?
No, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay. Um, are using the time between now and when the state law takes effect on January first, and they're doing an outrageous number of evictions without cause. I'd like to give you two very brief examples. There is a veteran that I was told about from one of the people representing him locally. And he has lived in a rent-controlled apartment in another city, it happens to be Santa Monica, since he was a toddler with his parents. The only time in his entire life that he has not lived in that apartment was during the eighteen months that he was in combat in Vietnam. When he returned from Vietnam, he moved back in with his parents. He's lived in that apartment his whole life. He's now in his seventies. Because his father died and then more recently his mother died, and they were the ones who were on the lease for the apartment, he has just been sued for eviction. were on the lease for the apartment, he has just been sued for eviction. This particular individual has stage four terminal cancer. And he's being removed from the only home he's had for almost 70 years. There's another case right down the street here where a veteran and his wife, again a Vietnam veteran in his 70s with stage four cancer, has just been given a notice to move before the end of the year because his landlord wants to sell the building. So what's happening right now to combat this, and I would ask you guys to do this as well, the City of Torrance has just passed an emergency ordinance, I believe the City of Los Angeles has done so, I know one of the other South Bay cities has done so, basically putting the same things into place that will be taking place January 1st with the state law and eliminating any other evictions that are not for cause. Please help to keep our residents in Hawthorne in their homes so they don't get evicted without cause on this loophole before January 1st. Thank you very much.
Russell, could you take a look at that, see if, can you give us like a little confidential by the end of the week? And if we need to do an emergency meeting on that?
Yeah, the sooner the better.
To enact that?
Like a moratorium? I'd be very much interested in it. A moratorium, but it has to be done quickly because January 1st, the law will take effect, right?
There's just a lot of, I've heard of those cases too and it's unfortunate. Okay, thank you, ma'am, for that suggestion. That's good, actually. We wanted to, people up here were talking about it. Go ahead.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. Thanks for the veterans that served this fine country. I was at an event yesterday held by the LA Veterans and the Veterans Commission with Janice Hahn yesterday. It was LA's first annual Veterans Day event held at the Coliseum. It was a great event, huge event. They had flyovers, they lit the torch and they had several veterans singing the National Anthem. I was there myself. It was a wonderful show, an event, I should say. Hopefully, Janice Hahn, which is, says she will have it back again next year, hopefully, if, if it's allowed. It was a great event. They talked about the Coliseum, that United Airlines and the Coliseum are agreed with keeping the memorial the way it is. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but the field was named after the United Airlines and the Coliseum would stay the same. But we should see during an event almost like LA, City of Los Angeles held, the Veterans Day, the first annual, annual Veterans Day event. It was tremendous, it was huge. It was great seeing all the veterans from all different branches. They honored all branches of the services. I enjoyed it, even though it was a hot and sticky day yesterday, but it was a great event. I was thinking maybe we should try doing something similar to what the City of Los Angeles held off. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? If not, I'll declare oral communications close ordered. Where are we at? Let's just double check, get this right.
Consent calendar?
Yeah, go ahead with the consent calendar, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have five items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item seven, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item eight, city treasurers request approval of the warrants. Item 10, resolution number 8146, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne proclaiming the month of November 2019 as Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Item 11, resolution number 8147, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, supporting the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of 2020. Item 12, resolution number 8149, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming the month of November 2019 as In-Home Care Provider Workforce and National Family Caregivers' Month in Hawthorne for adoption.
Move to approve.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Public hearings. Well, we did the public hearing, so let's move on to the ordinance, item 16, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Number 2192, second reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending 8.20 of Title 8 of the Hawthorne Municipal Code, providing that specified conditions accompanied by prolonged vacancies in a residential or commercial building constitutes a condition of public nuisance and making related changes to definitions and enforcement for adoption.
Move to approve. Yes, I would, yeah.
Okay.
It has to be seconded first and then we can
No, no, actually, he cut in, so it hasn't been seconded, so you can discuss without the second.
No, it's okay if they wanted to just have the second.
Okay, second, it's been seconded. Go discussion, go ahead.
So I just want to just kind of give a cap of what we're trying to do with this ordinance. And it's basically to create a blight fee to hold absent landlords accountable for maintaining their property within our community standards. This is a hopeful, hoping that it's resulting in beautification that would continue to make Hawthorne more desirable for other investors to come in and to continue to build. You know, one of the biggest things that they're going to come out is, is this business-friendly? And you know, to those that would say that, this is very business-friendly because it makes all businesses equally accountable for their property looks. So those who invest in our city won't find themselves next to or across from a blighted location after investing millions to move into our city. A good example of this kind of switch of pushing for vacant properties to be built or rezoned are the brewery area and the arts complex. That section of Hawthorne is a, a good example of taking vacant properties that were once just for commercial and manufacturing to an arch complex, breweries, hopefully more restaurants and housing projects as well. This also taps into, it hits the report that was made on RSG, the poll that was mentioned before of how the city is doing and things of that nature. And it brought up, if I can bring that out. It, it brings up these projects as well. For example, let's see. However, as with hotel development, the city has been practically engaged in economic development efforts to increase property tax revenue through investment and mixed-use development. Primarily, the development of the 2.5 acre mixed-use site planned near SpaceX headquarters and the Hawthorne Airport, which in the planning stages will serve as a catalyst project for increased investment and development throughout the city. It is important to note that the fiscal benefits from these efforts take time, typically several years for entitlement, construction, and certificates of occupancy. Therefore, the increased property taxes resulted from these efforts will appear as increased property taxes five to six years from now, depending on development and construction schedules. So that's one thing we have to kind of take into account is even though we have these products moving in and we're excited for development, it takes time for our general fund to even see any of those revenues. So for us to continuously look at additional properties that we have to spur some kind of economic development is important. A few points I wanted to read off the, from the ordinance itself. A few additions are, properties used or intended to be used for residential purposes, which contains, oh, here it is. Where property is vacant and otherwise required to be boarded up, the boarding shall be done in a manner approved by the building official and which does not itself have a significant adverse visual impact on the neighborhood. F is buildings designed for human use or occupancy, including residential and commercial buildings/structures that stand vacant for more than 90 days, will fall under this new public nuisance fee that we're going to be addressing out to the public. And to allow like the public to like understand, it's not like going after, you know, everyone if there's some kind of basis of, okay, if someone is struggling or if they are working with the city to kind of bring their building up to code, we did put in a clause with regards to subsection F, which is the 90 days of vacant. We have provided an exception in order to avoid penalizing certain vacancies that do not have a tendency to create blight. If a city manager finds in writing any of the following, a vacancy of nine consecutive days will not be considered a prohibited condition of property under section 8.20.030. We took a lot of time to ensure that once we're creating this kind of policy, we're taking everyone into account and especially all the vacant parcels. It's not supposed to be some kind of wooden stick that you're, you know, attacking the public with. This is clearly just to help kind of spur another economic catalyst for the city to take advantage of, as we've seen with like our new Hawthorne Arts District behind SpaceX, switching all those from just strictly commercial and manufacturing to what we've done recently truly shows that it would help kind of push Hawthorne to that next step. If there's any other questions?
I don't have any questions, I just have a couple of comments.
You know, I, anytime that you make a big change that affects a lot of people, there's always somebody that gets really slammed, you know? And what, what brought me to the city after being in this city for almost 40 years, selling real estate, was when I sold a piece of property that was fairly a nice piece of property, it was a 13 unit. And the owner, it happens to be the shopping center where I'm a tenant in the shopping center. And the owner, previous owner had a, one of the units had been vacant for over two years. And so when I sold it to him and cleaned it up and found a tenant, the tenant came over here to the city, they said, no, I'm sorry, we can't, we can't rent it to you because the property's been vacant for so long that you don't have, you, you lose the grandfather protection clause. And now this 13 units and now it's a 12 unit. And I thought, that's crazy, that's impossible. I didn't think that a city could do that, you know, that they would take away your, your parking require, now you don't have a parking requirement, you know? And do we still have that in place? That, something like that, that's pretty punitive, you know? You know?
In place of?
Well, has that been, is that still part of the code that, that you can lose your grandf, your, your, your grandfather protection if you've had your property vacant for X amount of period, period of time?
Well, the ordinance would not affect that part of it because the ordinance would have an exception if you're actively trying to sell or lease the premises. And if they're vacant for a couple of years and you're just unsuccessful in leasing the premises and there's no evidence of blight, there's really no effect on, on that situation. But you're, you're actually talking about something different, whether or not there's a grandfathering of use with regard to, was that a hair salon?
No, 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 it was just, it was just a vacant unit.
Yeah, and I believe that the issue back then was, there was a certain parking requirement for the number of square feet for that unit. And yes, you did lose the, or the owner did lose the, the right to lease it out because of that.
Okay, but that seems a little bit heavy-handed and somewhat punitive that you could end up
It, it applies across the board, so I guess, heavy-handed, not, it's not in the sense that it applies equally to everybody.
But it's equally heavy-handed, you know?
Yeah.
It, it makes a big difference when you change the zoning, when you change the code, where, let's just say that you, you, you thought you had 13 units and now you only got 12.
I wouldn't, as he's mentioning, it wouldn't, that's a whole different kind of item you're talking about.
Yeah, and what we can do is maybe we can agendize for the next meeting to discuss that particular parking requirement standard.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I think anything that we do to, you know, get the people to fix up their properties and get them rented, you know?
It wouldn't affect the code itself of what's required for those facilities, it's just, it's forcing them as, okay, if the city is giving you X, Y, Z to do and you're permitted, and for some reason, you're still holding the property vacant as hostage, for example, then it's, that's who we're addressing, but for the grandfathering, no, it's not supposed to, it's not touching that sign.
I would like to, you know, have, because that seems so illogical.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put that on the agenda or do a legal confidential to answer your question, okay?
I'd like to have, have some discussion on.
Yeah.
Okay, so I've had numerous complaints from residents concerning certain properties in Hawthorne that are blighted and that create an eyesore. For me, it's about image. If we, I'm happy to support the passage of this ordinance so that these properties will be considered a public nuisance if they create a significant adverse visual impact or substantially contribute to the dilapidated or deteriorated appearance of a neighborhood. We were talking about the economic rise of Hawthorne, we're seeing it on that chart. We are, we have seen tremendous growth in the past few years, a lot of new employees are coming in. People need to see us in a different way. People need to see this city as a city on the move, not a city with blighted properties all scattered throughout. Because I know that there are some property owners that have made it a practice of buying property and just letting it sit in a visually blighted condition, giving a poor perception of Hawthorne to the public. And people have actually complained to me, why is that piece of property looking so bad over there? And we don't need that anymore. We need to change this image of Hawthorne. So this is a message that the city council wants properties developed, not sitting around causing an eyesore. And I'm happy that they are, property owners will probably take this seriously now because these violations can be prosecuted as misdemeanors. So I'm happy to support this.
That's actually a good, a good point of, that was one of the things, it's being pushed as a misdemeanor. A couple other clauses that they're putting in, and this is, I have to give this to staff, which did a wonderful job in putting all this together. The new violation section also provides that a person can be guilty of separate offenses each and every day. This is also a standard provision in nuisance ordinances. In addition, contains two new provisions related to enforcement through civil injunction and administrative citation. These tools are common tools for cities, which staff has determined that will explicitly authorization, staff determined that explicit authorization would be useful. The last two I found interesting. Cities also have the right to seek inspection and/or abatement warrants. This right is now explicitly contained in new section 8.20.300. And finally, the new section 8.20.310 provides that the city may establish fees for the inspection of properties found to be in violation of the ordinance. What this kind of helps us do now is as we are having code enforcement have like the teeth they need to go, you know, after some of these vacant properties, allowing the city to now put it up as a lien or a warrant and that we can now go after the costs that we've invested in administering this kind of code enforcement, really does give us that little extra avenue to like really be that more aggressive since we can recoup the costs and place these fees as liens up on the properties. From the noise itself to just having this out there, as, as Councilmember Olivia mentioned, there's already a kind of a fear set into some of these developers showing that Hawthorne is on the verge of, okay, we've taken enough of a beating over the years, now it's our turn to kind of push back on some of these properties that have left dormant for years. We do know that there are a lot of vacant properties here in Hawthorne. It's just not fair that, you know, for all these years that we've been pushing to put us on this road now, that we've made it this far, to still be held back because you're not, you're having certain people not put in their own weight to help the city thrive. You know, that's, that's the biggest reason why we're pushing. We just want it to be an even playing field. The residents are trusting in us, they're investing their money into our taxes and revenues. The least we can do is show them that we're fighting alongside with them.
Counselor Montero?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is, is a wonderful amendment to the chapter 8.20. My question is, do we have a fee schedule, you know, how we're going to enforce this? Do we have like a amount of dollar in, in mind?
I'll put that on for the next meeting. Because this ordinance doesn't become effective for 30 days anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, yeah, I want to see that. Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to vote?
There is.
Motion, there's a second.
Motion, and second. Okay, you made the motion and who's second?
I seconded.
Okay, so she made the motion and you seconded.
Perfect, thank you.
Got it? All right. Gracias. Please vote. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Mr. City Manager, your consent calendar, sir?
Mr. Mayor, uh, before I move forward with my consent calendar, I would like to pull item number twenty-seven. It's a city treasurer report. If city treasurer would like to, uh, report on this item.
I believe eighteen is also pulled.
Oh, thank you. Uh, first, I want to thank, uh, city staff, specifically the finance department, for helping to put together the report and do all the hard, hard work. And just, just want to say, I'm just happy with, uh, how things are going in terms of the city's, um, the return that city's earning on, on our money. The council had authorized some time ago for, uh, an RFP for a new banking partner when Bank of the West was chosen, which was a great corporate, our great banking partner, our previous banking partner. Wells Fargo wasn't, uh, essentially wasn't giving us any interest on our deposits and was charging us a lot of fees. Our new corporate partner gives a lot of, gives us a lot of opportunity to earn some interest on our deposits and, uh, even have a savings account that allows us to earn some interest. So just looking at, you know, the report and some of our statements, um, just year-to-date. We've collected over a hundred and forty thousand dollars in, in interest, um, from Bank of the West and the interest that, uh, the bank gives us on our deposits. The council approved, they're opening up a, kind of a, using a sweep account or having us take some excess money out of our checking, put it into a savings account to earn some interest as well. You know, that's been a benefit and, you know, has the opportunity to yield us some, some good money. Right now, at the, as, um, Councilwoman Olivia Valentine mentioned, uh, in our economy, we have something called a, a inverted yield curve going on, which means our short-term interest rates are a little bit higher than our long-term interest rates. So we're getting some pretty good interest on our savings, on our deposits. But also, you know, thanks to the council approving the latter strategy that we're using for investing our surplus funds into CDs over a three- to five-year period allows us to lock in some, um, some favorable interest rates for long-term. In case the current, uh, interest rate environment changes and our short-term interest rates fall, we'll have some good interest rates locked in for long-term as well. So overall, you know, our, we're earning some pretty good money on, on our money. I believe we're estimated to earn about one seventy, um, in interest from our, our CDs as well. And so, you know, it's a, a big difference between, I think, the twenty or thirty thousand we've earned in the past. And a lot of this has to do as well with the, just the more money we have to, on deposits to, to deal with and to play with, I guess. Lack of a better word, you know, from the deal that was done across the street with our, um, our new, um, our new hotel project. And just the, the changes that the council has implemented to increase our funds to be invested. You know, it's gone a long way. I'm just proud to be, you know, part of the team to help, um, you know, put this money to good use and increase the return on our investment.
Quick question.
Yes.
So when the Federal Reserve, you know, decreased interest rate like, like, you know, the point twenty-five they did it like a month, like a few weeks ago. So it would not affect our investment because those are locked in, correct?
Correct. Correct. So when it comes to our, our CDs, uh, we have everything from six months, twelve months, eighteen months, three-year CDs. And so those interest rates are locked in.
Thank you.
Are we good for moving forward?
Yes, I would counsel move forward with receiving and filing.
Okay.
You have to vote on receive and file of the report.
I move to receive and file the report.
Second.
Please vote.
Give it to, give it to Heydon.
The vote reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, I have, with the exception of item eighteen that has been pulled already. I have items nineteen through twenty-six for your approval tonight.
I make the motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
All right. Discussion item A.
Okay, uh, council members, um, December twenty-fourth is a city holiday. And, uh, I would like to request, as has been the tradition in the city, because of Christmas holidays, to cancel the second meeting in December, if you like.
I made a motion.
No way.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Montero and then Awat. Please vote. Thank you, Arnie.
Merry Christmas. The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Making me time to plan my trip.
Okay, council members' reports, uh, and city officials' reports. City Treasurer David Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the community for coming out and participating in the process and letting your voices be heard. And, you know, letting, um, those that vote on your behalf know how you would like them to vote. Um, one other thing, um, you know, I definitely appreciate the, um, recommendation to see what can be done as far as doing a moratorium on the no-cost evictions in our city. I've had a couple of residents reach out to me. And, uh, one specifically, a longtime friend reached out to me and told me how her father's been in the city for over ten years. And it's being evicted, um, in December, um, simply just because his rent is relatively low. The rent that he's paying is relatively low, um, and not for any kind of breach of, of the lease. And, you know, of course, it's obviously in advance of the rent control, um, law that was passed, you know, so this landlord could, uh, I guess, raise his rents as high as possible. So, uh, you know, obviously whatever's possible, uh, I think the community would, would appreciate. Want to give out a little bit of information, the, our Housing Rights Center that, um, that's run by the county that we, we partner with, want to give out their phone number. If anybody in the community is having some challenges, uh, with their rental situation, with their landlord, with any, um, just kind of any housing challenges. This is the organization that we refer, um, you know, our residents to. So you can call the Housing Rights Senator at the Housing Rights Center at eight hundred four seven seven five nine seven seven. And then the Housing Rights Center is at eight hundred four seven seven five nine seven seven. And, um, you know, if you have any kind of challenges with your landlord, if landlords have some challenges with your tenants as well, this is a, a great resource that, you know, all of you guys can reach out to.
Okay, uh, city clerk Paul Jimenez?
Yes, uh, thank you to everyone who's here tonight and those who are watching at home. I just have a few updates. So first, happy belated Veterans Day. So here, thank you to those who have served our country. Thank you to everyone that coordinated the Halloween carnival. It was nice to see so many happy families enjoying the event. Pablo and I had a great time at it. This is a reminder that one of our interns is writing Hawthorne news stories for the Herald Press. So if you have any suggestions on stories for the newspaper, please contact our office at three one zero three four nine two nine one eight. This is a reminder to our directors, council members, mayor. If you have any events or resources that you want to share with our community, please send the flyers to our social media intern Sarah. Sarah sent you an email last week, so this is a friendly reminder. Um, and that is all. Short and sweet.
Thank you. Councilmember Awat?
You, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, you know, thank the residents for coming out. I want to thank my council colleagues for pushing over the blight fee. Wanted to just touch on, uh, the one little update, uh, for the Clippers stadium. They, they got over one of their biggest hurdles, uh, so they, they were in favor of Inglewood. So it looks like the Clippers stadium is going to continue for, um, the L.A. Clippers. Which is great, um, which also kind of puts us on the high ace of there's going to be more businesses coming in that Inglewood cannot handle. And we're going to need to find a way to at least acquire some of it or place them somewhere. Because I also see ourselves having to pass the baton to like Longdale or any adjacent city, um, which is a good thing. The fact that there's so many moving in, that there's not enough space. So the fact that we're in, we're considered the hub of the South Bay, um, now we're gonna have that, that availability of kind of connecting into all those revenue streams.
A great problem to have.
Oh, finally. But besides that, of the Earth Cafe, um, the grand opening was, uh, this past Sunday, which was amazing. So residents, if you have a chance, go enjoy their coffee. Besides that, happy Veterans Day and thank you all for coming out.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Councilmember Taya?
I went to, uh, I went to Earth Cafe the other day. You know, I just wanted to see, you know, the, the, the grand opening was amazing. It says, where all these people come from, you know? And, uh, and I went to have breakfast and it was packed. It was packed and the food was wonderful and, you know, so, um, it really is a, a great addition to our city. Also, I had the pleasure, uh, to join, uh, Councilwoman Olivia at the Burlington opening the other day. You know, it's another big store right there, uh, it's kind of finishing up the, uh, that whole area. And, uh, you know, I, uh, we have a Target, it's not ours, but it's nice to have a Target right on the corner there, you know? For me, I'm walking distance, okay?
No, you have to go shop on one twenty. That's a long day.
I know.
That's a long day. Don't pay no sales tax over there.
I live a block away from Target, you know?
Nope, you have to go to one twenty.
The rent control issue, you know, um, it, you know, it, it is, the state passed it, uh, it's five percent. And with the cost of living or whatever index they're using, uh, you can raise the rent about seven percent per year, which is better than the county. The county raised it, uh, I mean, froze it at three percent. So that was my question to, to the senator, uh, who's going to supersede who? And I guess they're still trying to work that out, you know? Because three percent is too low and I know people are screaming and, you know, uh, but five percent seems like something that people can live with. But, you know, you gotta be careful what you ask for because now people that ordinarily wouldn't get a rent increase are gonna get one every year. And that's just how things work, you know? So you might not have gotten a rent increase for three, four years, but believe me, you're gonna get one every year from now on. And so I don't know what impact that's gonna have on, on people, you know? Because five percent, seven percent starts to add up pretty soon, you know? And so, um, Veterans Day, you know, uh, I'm always busy that weekend. I had, uh, the opportunity to, to go to, uh, Native American Veterans Association Pow Wow, which was pretty interesting. It was in South Gate. And then, um, you know, um, well, anyway, just, it's a day that, that, um, pretty special for, for the people that I run with. And, um, and I appreciate all the veterans that were here and I know that, uh, the, uh, the firework is an issue, you know? I've not, you know, I know it's an issue. And I hope that we can work things out where everybody's happy because, you know, this is the greatest country in the world. And you, you, you gotta know that. And, and we have one birthday and we like to blow things up a little bit, you know? And then, you know, then, then that's it, you know, then that's it. And, and really, you could take away all the fireworks, the skies are still gonna be lit up with illegal fireworks. There's nothing, that has nothing to do with what's being sold and what people are lighting in front of their, you know? That, that's a real problem that, uh, you know, that's not gonna go. Anyway, I hope that it works out so everybody's happy. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, you know, great meeting, a lot of democracy in action, right? So I want to say, you know, thank you for all of those who attended the annual five K and the health fair at the Hawthorne High on October twenty-six. The Earth Cafe, like, uh, Mr. Watt mentioned, you know, it was a great things to see, you know, a beautiful place. So just go there and have a meal, breakfast or lunch. I had a meeting with the census people, uh, the census twenty-twenty. So the, um, complete count committee is going to start meeting on December eleven, I believe. December eleven, we're gonna have a meeting at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. At three thirty at the Polaris Room, uh, where we're going to start to talk about strategy to make sure that everybody is count, uh, in twenty-twenty for the census in the city of Hawthorne, okay? Again, the, uh, I want to say, you know, thank you to Parks and Recs, you know, Von, Kwanah Bowie and, and Brenda and the Parks and Rec Commission, because they did an outstanding job for the carnival. And it was a lot of people there, Halloween carnival. And then, uh, the art show on, 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 uh, November seventh. Again, it was the, you know, the Fine Arts Commission and the Parks and Rec that did an outstanding job, having all those, uh, schools. You know, the kids with their arts and exhibitions was very good. Thank you for that. Rebecca and Perry, uh, thank you for organizing the Halloween right here at City Hall for those kids to come from the castle to do, you know, trick or treat, you know, over there. So it was fantastic. So thank you all the staff who participated on that. The Al Camino did have a grand open of the student service building. It was a beautiful building, you know, to see that our tax dollar is in good use. Actually, this afternoon, I went to the grand open of the Longdale High School, uh, another building. They're called Humanity Building. It's a beautiful building, uh, right down Longdale High School, so stop by and, and visit. On the November sixth, I attend the South Bay Cock Homeless Task Force. And I'm going to invite one of the L.A. County Deputy to come to the Hawthorne-Londale Minister Association meeting on the eleven to talk to the churches, to give the churches some money to help the homeless, okay? Because they have a lot of programs and they want to work with the churches. So I'm going to invite them to come and talk to the church and maybe we can get some money of that proper, proper major age from the homeless, uh, in downtown, from, from L.A. County. Yesterday, I did attend a, a veteran service at the, uh, US Vet in Inglewood with Congresswoman Maxine Water and, uh, Mayor of Inglewood, Jim Butt. So it was a very good event over there. So we honored the veterans and, um, and they gave me this pin that you see right here. So it was, uh, and I talked a little bit and told them our projects coming up in Hawthorne, uh, housing for veterans. So they were very excited about, about that. Uh, I just gave you guys a brochure that I asked, uh, Arnie to come up with some type of a brochure that we can go when we go to meetings. Because, you know, we go to a lot of these meetings representing the city, but we don't have nothing to give it to them. So we want to promote the city of Hawthorne, uh, especially with all these economic forecasts, you know? So we want to show what we have. So there is this beautiful brochure that has been developed, uh, that show, you know, uh, Hawthorne, the business. They have a little, uh, demographic profile of the city. And then it's something that we can take with us when we go to the meetings and to, to the other cities to show what Hawthorne has been doing and, and what we're going from now, right? Because we want more economic development. The last thing that I want to say, uh, please keep Ms. Love in your prayer because she just came out of the surgery about two hours ago. Her heart has been kind of weak, so they put another new stamp on it. So she's at Sentinel Hospital, uh, sixth floor, room seven. So, um, that's what Ms. Love is not, is not here tonight. So, uh, let's, uh, adjourn this meeting with a prayer for Ms. Love, okay? Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. So the first thing I want to do is say, um, a belated thank you to the veterans for recognizing Veterans Day. Thank you to all who served our great country, especially our veterans who served in World War II and Vietnam. We're losing them at a great rate and I want to make sure that we recognize them while they're still here. Keeping in the spirit of our good economic news, as everyone has mentioned, Earth Cafe and Burlington. Earth Cafe, um, what is amazing about that place is its amazing attention to detail. They create not just a great dining experience, but also a visual experience as well. The restaurant is beautiful with vibrant colors and marble tiling. And of course, the food is wonderful, so I'm, I'm, I'm just delighted to have them in Hawthorne. Burlington, of course, opened on Friday, November eighth, just in time for the Christmas shopping season. So please go and shop there. It's a huge department store. It's got a wide variety of household items and clothing. So please shop at Burlington. The Burlington in Hawthorne, not the other, not the other Burlington, not the other Burlington. I want to thank the Parks Recreation and Fine Arts Commission. And I also want to thank the staff of the city's recreation and community services department for putting on the great cultural event, the Beautiful Arts Festival on November seventh. There were such talented artists from the school. There were such talented artists from the schools that participated. And I saw several works from budding artists that I think these will be greatest, great artists in the future if they keep up their artwork. I saw some beautiful sculptures that you would be hard pressed to believe that they actually came from children. Though I want to, I just want to congratulate all those who participated. The Balboas, I know were very instrumental in putting that on. Art revitalizes communities, as I've said over and over before. And I love to see the fact that children express their hope in their art. So keep up the work on the art festival, that's very important for Hawthorne. Thank you all, have a good week.
Okay. Quick go back?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, just FYI, because I received a letter and a phone call from some churches and some nonprofit organization because they receive a bill and a letter from the new service provider that Hawthorne have contracted, is for the the fire alarm, right? Because you have to have a fire permit for your building or your residence. But if you receive a bill, just call the number that is on that bill because I called mine and then they said, I'm sorry, we made a mistake because my permit doesn't expire until June thirty, twenty twenty. So, but they were sending me a bill, okay? So, and I did receive a certified letter from a church complaining about this. That's why I brought it up. So, but just just call and they will rectify the mistake. So don't don't feel that you've been double charged. So they will, they will just delete you from the delinquent, okay? So thank you.
Okay. Councilmember what?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, for the Operation Gobbler event at Hawthorne Auto Square, there is one small part, I forgot, speaking about Earth Cafe. So they're also partnering up for the event and they're giving, for every turkey that's given out, they'll give out a pumpkin pie, one of their, I guess they're famous for their pumpkin pies for Thanksgiving. So they'll be at the event as well with Michael's Learning Place, the school that helps, you know, children with, you know, handicap issues and mental issues and things of that nature. So they'll both be handing out the turkeys and pumpkin pies alongside all of us when we're passing out the turkeys. And another small thing, apparently, our Wi-Fi, if not a lot of people know this, the Wi-Fi within the City of Hawthorne, especially in City Hall, it catches. So you can be within the chambers and here within City Hall and you can actually get Wi-Fi signal. I didn't know that until today when I walked into the chamber and there's Wi-Fi already within City Hall.
Can you put it on French hall?
Right here. Like, I'm Wi-Fi now? Oh, no, not that, I mean, our council chamber is here. It was fascinating to see that we actually have signal inside City Hall. That was the biggest issue. But I just wanted to throw that out there, like, good job, staff. It caught me by surprise that we actually have Wi-Fi signal inside City Hall. So again, marvelous job, it's amazing. And that's all.
Oh, and you also can get the Wi-Fi signal in the gym, so that's how I connect to my music app, so. It's been like that for a couple of years, though.
Can I imagine my turkey day, too?
Ooh, all right, turkey, go ahead.
All right. So on November twenty first, actually, the Hawthorne President's Council and the City of Hawthorne in collaboration, we're going to give out our turkey and food basket at the South Campus, you know, privacy to South. The address is closed by fourteen zero one three Yukon Avenue. So we go behind the school because the school is on Comblum, but you go on fourteen zero one three Yukon Avenue for the giveaways that are ten AM in the morning. So we're going on November twenty first. Okay, thank you.
All right. Is that it? Okay, so thank you to all my colleagues for being here, the community, everybody watching us. Democracy in action is is correct. We were able to have some healthy discussion and we were able to come up with some good conclusions, some good decisions, et cetera. Thank you to all my council colleagues who are having events benefiting the community. Good luck to you guys, hopefully there'll be good turnout, so the community appreciates that. So with regards to the Earth Cafe, absolutely, that was a great, a grand opening. It's a beautiful place. It's probably like the best looking one that I've seen out of all the like four or five that they have. So, and for them to have chosen the City of Hawthorne as its commissary, this is where they just make their food and distribute, you know, the food that they need to make in a one set place, like the bakery, cheeses, anything else that they need to make here. They make it here and they distribute it all around L.A. County so that everybody can have fresh food, biscuits, pastries, et cetera. So wonderful food, great, great service. And it's a great environment and the tile work that you see there that the owner's wife designed is beautiful. So just go take a look on one hundred and forty seventh, right down the street from Best Buy. So take a look, you're going to enjoy yourself and you're going to be proud that they are here in the City of Hawthorne. So other than that, I don't think I have anything else.
Hey, thank you to Arnie for the brochure.
Well, thank you, Arnie, for the brochure, absolutely. Let's give it up for Arnie.
No, 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 no.
Arnie is doing such a great job for the city.
Let's give it up for Eric Chavez, our cable supervisor, he took all the pictures, by the way. And then also our airport supervisor, Guido Fernandez, who helped me also. So I was going to mention their names.
Okay. Who designed this? Who designed this?
It just came together.
It came together. To all those people in Hawthorne City employees, thank you for all helping put this together. Let's give a round of applause to them. Is there anything further from our city council colleagues or staff? If not, I declare this meeting adjourned.